Hey Dan.
Hi, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Good, well, I wish my background was as cool as yours.
I just have to stand still because if I move, I sort of like disappear.
Yeah, yeah.
How are things?
Pretty good, pretty good.
Good, thank you for doing this today.
Yeah, it should be good.
We have about thirty-five that will be on the call today, thirty-five.
Do you guys do this every week?
No, you know what, we were doing them every week and then our audience kind of dropped once everybody went back to work and bakeries were starting to open back up. Now we're about once a month.
Okay.
So if you're okay, Dan, I'm gonna start letting people in the room.
Yeah, can I practice sharing the screen?
Yeah, for sure.
Make sure that works.
All right, I'm gonna make you the host. And then... Okay, you are officially the host.
All right.
There it is.
Can you still see me or just the...
So I can see your main screen is front and center and then off to the side on the right, I can see our pictures, like our video.
Okay. I'll stop sharing that for a minute.
Okay. Perfect, and I am gonna take... How do I take that control? Good question.
Do I have to give you back control?
Oh, maybe you do, is... Can you try and do that? And then I can let people in the room.
Let's see here.
So I think there's three little dots at the top right corner of where my picture is for the video.
Yeah.
And then if you click that... Nope, that's not where mine is, let's see.
Make host, here we go.
Okay, perfect.
All right, I clicked that, you should be...
Okay. You are now the host, okay. So if you're okay, I'm gonna start letting, we have like about three people waiting, waiting to get in.
Yeah.
These crazy Zoom meetings, okay, one second. And Lynn is one of them, so that's good. And everybody should be on mute until I unmute them. Oh, you're on mute too, hold on. I'm gonna unmute your line, Dan. Actually, I can't unmute you, so if you can unmute yourself, that would be great. Hi, how are you? Hi, everybody. I'm gonna unmute everyone's line for now until we get a little more crowded and then we'll... Is it working?
Okay.
How is everybody?
Stressed out.
I'm fine.
Hanging in there but very stressed out.
Are things getting better? Remind me where you're coming from. I know we've been...
I'm in Smithfield, Virginia.
Okay.
And so we have a small, very small specialty bakery specializing in custom cakes and wedding cakes and then you know, two bakery cases and it's just... It's just, just hard to, you know, keep going.
We're all feeling that, right?
Yeah, I'm sure, I'm absolutely sure. I just, I want to be where you are, Bernadette, I love that.
In my big background?
Yes, I wanna, I want that, I love that. It looks like a very happy place.
Right, exactly. I do want those chairs, oh, the side, those chairs.
Yeah, yeah. Super cute.
So we have a very big group today, I think we have a little over thirty-five that'll be joining us today, so we'll give it... We're still pretty early, so thanks, kudos to the folks who are out early. You get the gold star.
Some of us are almost done eating our lunch, so...
Multitaskers.
Yes.
Lynn, how's everything by you guys?
I'm waiting to see what's gonna happen now that all of the, well, the businesses around us are all, and the towns around us are all going to, you have to wear masks to go into any indoor business and given that I live in Stearns County, Minnesota, which is one of the conservative areas where they were trying to challenge everything, I'm waiting to see how this is going to work.
We, we are a mask state, so everywhere we, no matter where we go, we have to have a mask on, so...
Yeah, right, right now it's just cities and a number of different, of course, Target and Walmart and Sam's Club and those places, but I know that there are definitely some bars and eating establishments in Stearns County, which are more bars than eating, but that are not following the rules and that are not gonna require masks. So it'll be interesting, although when they tried opening up early, they did threaten to yank their liquor license, so we'll see how that goes this time around.
They are doing that in Chicago, so any restaurant or bar, if you're, if they have more than the allotted number that should be in there, if they're unmasked, if they're, if they're not following the rules, they will, I'm not exactly sure who's policing it, but that's the threat. So, I don't know, what a mess.
This is Janice, our mayor, sorry, our mayor made a wall of shame.
That's great.
Well, I'm in Oklahoma, so you can imagine. Nobody wears a mask here. But us, we do.
Linda, where in Oklahoma are you?
I'm in a small town named Talaqua, it's about an hour and a half from Tulsa, so...
Oh, okay.
Northeastern Oklahoma, the good part.
The good part.
Green part. But we just, we're just doing doorway service. I was closed for three months and we just opened it up with doorway service because I knew people wouldn't wear masks and I don't wanna get it, I'm, I'm too old to mess with them, so, and sure enough, I don't. For the most part. We'll just, you know...
We've been under a mask requirement for, I don't know, two months maybe and...
Is it working?
You gotta say ninety-five percent of the people wear them all the time, everywhere, and then the other five percent of the people are on Facebook going, "This is unconstitutional." Like, you wear a seatbelt, you wear a helmet, you wear a shirt and shoes when you go in a restaurant, but...
What's the diff?
But most people do, I mean, I'm not sure, a single person has been in my bakery without a mask on in two months.
I just hate to put my little eighteen-year-old kids up there arguing with men, mostly. One woman threw a cookie at our window because she was mad that we had masks on. We didn't ask her to wear one, we had, she was mad at us.
Hopefully it was a cookie she bought.
She bought it and she threw it from her car window and hit the front of my building. Who knows, I don't know what her complaint was, other than masks.
We don't waste cookies, not, not this group, we don't waste cookies.
No. It's not right.
We know better.
That takes all kinds, huh?
Right.
Gotta have some entertainment. Hey Janice.
Off to the right side, we're not gonna have enough time to sort of go through, we, sometimes we go through and do introductions of everybody that's on the call, but I think we'll just have too many, which is a great problem to have. So if you can, if you have time, off to the right is the group chat.
Oh.
Hi Patty. If you wanna write your name and where your bakery is and what bakery you're from, except for Nick, Nick's driving, Nick, don't, don't do that. But if you can, just off to the right there, just throw your name and what your bakery name is and where you're located, that way we can sort of see who's in the group and say hi to everybody. Patty, how are you?
Hi Patty.
Trying to unmute you, but...
Okay, can you hear me now? Hey Dan, how are you? I'm, I'm good, I'm good, I think today's our restaurant's fortieth anniversary, so big day.
Happy anniversary.
Yeah, I don't know why I'm so crabby today, but I'm just crabby, but anyhow.
He invited somebody to make you a cake for that, for that anniversary.
Right, maybe that's why I'm crabby, they keep expecting me to do stuff.
We're good started in just a few minutes, I know there was a lot that registered, so I know things happen and hopefully they'll all start popping on here in a few seconds, a few minutes.
Hi, thank you.
I'm going to mute myself back, okay?
Okay, sounds good.
Hey Janice, didn't you guys just have a big anniversary too?
It was a year ago, it was our seventieth and then for seventy-one, you know, we, we just changed the banner from seventy to seventy-one, that was all we did. We did seventy-one cent cookies at all our store, at, no, at that store and it was a huge hit, huge, so that's what we're gonna do for National Bakery Day, the seventy-one cent cookies at all our stores.
So cheese dip is a really big thing, well, you know, you're in the South as well and we used to sell our cheese dip to Walmart until we got tired of Walmart. Took twenty years, but you know, anyhow, that's a whole nother story, but we're doing forty cent cheese dip today and so it's been a big deal, yeah, it's been fun, okay.
Happy birthday.
Thank you.
We'll give it just, it's two o'clock now, we'll just give it a few minutes, we have a few people popping in, so... And those who are just hopped on, if you have a second, off to the right is our group chat, if you can just put your name and where you're from and your bakery, that would be great.
I see Ellen just hopped on here, good. I know she can't talk and I don't see her face.
You think I'd be used to these Zoom things and the whole find the chat, let people in the room thing, but it's taken a few minutes, so I apologize.
Did you know you can set that up where you don't have to let people in?
I did not know that Patty, that would be great.
Yeah, you can do that. Hey Ellen?
Hi Ellen.
Hi Dan, hi Patty, how are you?
I see you said hi to Dan first, some things don't change.
I said hi to you, my son said I hadn't unmuted it yet, so you're right, never change. It's good to see you.
You too Ellen.
Well, new world since last time we saw each other, huh?
Yeah, so Dan and Ellen and I were in Atlanta for an RPIA meeting, February, what, twenty-seventh or so?
We started on March first, we, it was, I think Sunday, March first was the, the opening dinner, right?
Okay, well, we, I went down early, so that's probably where I'm confused, and then I stayed for Atlanta Market and I saw one mask in the airport coming back, none going down there. And then, wow, things changed.
Right.
I'm gonna mute again.
We were surprised to see the Sugar Show, the, it's in Atlanta, it's coming up in September, they're still having their event, so they're one of the first ones we've seen that hasn't canceled for the year or done something a little different or, so I'm, I'm proud of them for still doing it, we're not going. We're still doing it. How is everybody? You're all muted, but that's okay, who can wait? Dan, we'll just give it two more minutes and we'll start right at two oh five. Hi Paul, how are you? And I think Mike Clemens is in Vegas. Is that Vegas, I can't tell, not Vegas, no.
That's downtown Indianapolis.
Oh, or Vegas, I mean, they're, they're pretty much, they're close.
Yeah, you wouldn't, you wouldn't know the difference.
Everybody has to meet our new addition since we're still not started yet, this is Honey Bun, we're keeping with the bakery theme.
Cute. So if you've just hopped on in the last few minutes, we just asked everyone to go on the group chat onto the right and just put your name and your bakery, where you're from, since we have a bigger crowd today, we probably won't be able to do a full welcome or individual introduction, so...
Dan, I saw a nice article that the ice cream donuts are back, I saw some logos on the food truck.
Yeah, we didn't bring back the food truck, but we brought back the donuts, launched them last week, super popular, nothing better than ice cream inside of a donut. I'd forgot we brought those to Atlanta.
No, I, I know those, I've had those, those are great.
Yeah.
You saw those in the bakery, Dan, you said you don't have your food truck anymore, it's not right now?
Yeah, we had a food truck last summer, we were doing a pilot test to see would make sense and thank goodness we didn't buy one last year because all the food festivals are canceled this year, but the product is, is still good and we do that, we're doing it on our bakery now.
I thought was so interesting when you presented the idea at our share group meeting was the fact that you had rented the food truck for the summer, like it just never occurred to me, like, you know, there would be a more economical way to maybe test it out and yes, great that we all didn't buy those, but it was, you know, one of those things that the peer learning was so valuable on the trip.
Yeah, we learned a lot of what not to do if we ever buy a food truck and what to do. Anthony's more the expert on that, though.
Those food trucks might be on sale right now though.
But we do have.
Okay, we are gonna get started, we're just at two oh five, thank you already for hopping on our town hall meeting today, we haven't had one in a few weeks, so we're really appreciative that everyone is getting our messages and getting the word out about these events, this is one of our bigger crowds, we appreciate that. Today, we have such a great topic and Dan, we're so grateful that you can hop on today and, and tell us a lot about what Buskin has done over the last few months, I'm gonna give Dan's bio and then I'm gonna hand it over to Dan. So Buskin's Bakery is founded in Cincinnati by Joseph C. Buskin Senior in nineteen twenty-eight and the iconic bakery started from humble beginnings selling baked goods from the counter of a meat market in East Hyde Park. In nineteen sixty-two, Buskin moved the bakery operations to its current location at the corner of Madison and Edwards Road in Hyde Park. Today, the fourth generation bakery operates around the clock, six days a week and pushes out over one hundred unique varieties of fresh baked goods every day, but someday. We are, they are a full-line retail bakery, however, they do not sell wedding cakes. We, they also have a cafe element to the bakery. Brian is the VP at Spearhead's New Product Development and Marketing, his nickname is the marketing weasel, and I guess we can call him that because he's on vacation and he's out on the call. And then we have Dan, who's our presenter today, and Dan is the president and he oversees the operation, finance and HR side of the business, so Dan, I'm gonna pass over admin to you so you can share your screen and thank you again, Dan, and take it away.
All right, just wave if you can hear me. We're good, all right. Well, thank you all, I'm kinda humbled to be in front of all you, you guys are all excellent bakery, cafe operators and I've learned a lot from all of you over the years and some of you are very close, I'd call close friends, so hopefully something I have to say today will, will help you and your business, maybe your families. Let me just kinda set the stage today, I know that we, we all... You know, all of our businesses are, are not the same, we all specialize in different things, our businesses are different sizes, some of us focus more on retail, some on wholesale, some on niche, some many locations, some one location, and I think the one thing we do all have in common is the roller coaster ride we've all been on the last several months and I wanna be sensitive to the fact that maybe we've already lost some businesses in this group, I know some of us will survive and some of us may not, some of us don't know yet, I don't think any of us know for sure, but again, what we all do have in common is we're kind of experiencing this together, learning from each other, we all have employees, whether that's a good or bad thing, it's probably a different webinar, but we all have a passion for this business, for this industry and at the end of the day, I know we all being in business and entrepreneurs have a desire to make a profit and so I'm just hoping some things that I shared today, even though they might not be specific to, to your bakery or your organization, that you'll be able to take something away. So I'm gonna start today just with a short, three-minute video, I'm hoping the technology works here, but it's a video that I watched, I think it was back in April, when, when the storm was, was raging and all of us were, were just not knowing what the next day would bring, but it, it's really helped me over the last several months to kinda, kinda understand what we're going through, where we might be and the context of it is, is actually centered around three words, PPP, and it's not the PPP that we're all familiar with, the PPP is protect, pivot, and pioneer. So the video explains kind of the meaning of these in the context of a ship on the water being in a storm, I'm hopeful, I'm hopeful that this little video will help, but it's really gonna frame up my, my comments for the first fifteen, twenty minutes of this call, so let me try to share my screen and pull up this video and we will see if it works. Bernadette, if you'll just give a thumbs up and I click play to see if you guys can all hear it. Can we turn that volume up? I think I've got it as loud as I can. All right. So I'm gonna kinda hit on all three today, what Buskin did in those first early days to batten down our hatches and protect our business and then I'll get into the other pivoting and pioneering and I, I really like to spend most of the time on the pioneering because I think most of us have done what we can to protect our organizations and we've done some pivoting and we look different now, but the real question I think on a lot of our minds is how are we gonna look and how are we gonna be different and what innovative ideas can we share with each other to make sure we all stay afloat? So kind of in those early days when Buskin was fattening down the hatches and trying to protect our organization, we... I describe this as drinking from, from a fire hose, literally, as most of you experienced every day, just the amount of decisions we were required to make, the direction that we had to give to our organizations, the people looking to us to lead and make decisions about whether to stay open or closed, trying to keep up with all the state orders and it just felt like the ship was sinking and I, I tell people that there wasn't any other time really in our business, I felt like I had to have my finger on every single piece of the business at the same time, it was, it was overwhelming, but Buskin... My PowerPoint stopped. Give me just a minute. There we go, so we acted quickly and aggressively, we were considered to be an essential business, I'm not sure why donuts were determined to be more essential than getting cavities filled, but we weren't gonna complain, so we were allowed to stay open in our state and we actually chose to close seven of our eight locations primarily because we saw the trend of the, just the revenue dropping in our, in our retail outlets and so... And so we did that pretty quickly, pretty early on. It was kind of risky, especially considering that we were allowed to stay open. But it, it actually turned out, as I will kind of paint the picture, it turned out well for us. Our, I'm going to just go here if that's all right, because it keeps freezing up on me. So anyway, our, our company is made up about 50, 50, 50% retail business and 50% wholesale, selling to grocery stores and other wholesalers who resell our product. We did, like most of you, we did immediate layoffs. I had to lay off 90 people in about 24 hours, which was no fun. So we were left with about a, about 30 people. We had 120 people before the layoffs. We've, we got a PPP loan. Of course, that was stressful, but we pulled it off. But what started to happen very early on after the layoffs with just the remaining 25, 30 employees is that I started to see a big culture change in our company. We were kind of left with what I call the A team, the best of the best. And I was way more engaged in parts of the business I hadn't normally been engaged in. I was present a lot more in parts of the business that typically I wasn't present in. And we, with just so many layers being removed, we became very flexible, very nimble and, and, and change happened way quicker. So we were able to launch products and make decisions as a company way quicker than, than we were before, just to have all these layers. And so it was actually very positive. The people that remained realized that their employment was valuable and that no task was above them. And everybody pitched in, everybody was willing to do anything. All of a sudden, these roles and these titles started to kind of go away. And it was, we were all focused on really the greater good of the company. So then we, and I'm guessing some of you will be in different stages of, of these PPP stages, but we, we pivoted. We turned into the waves. Keyword here is waves. There were still plenty of waves. There were still plenty of chaos. But we turned into the waves and these are some of the things we did early on. The next slide will talk about some of the things that we think we'll do moving forward.
Hey Dan, sorry, real quick, just so you know, we, we don't see your PowerPoint. We still see the video. So.
Okay. Thank you for telling me.
Sure.
Let's see. Still see the video. Can you see it now? Says my screen sharing is paused.
So I, I still see the, the video. But maybe, yeah.
I got it.
Okay, there we go.
We're there?
Yes, thank you.
All right, thank you for, so. Yeah, so we pivoted. And what we typically are kind of go to in, in downturns or bad times is to just look at products and determine if there's any new products that we can come out with, considering the circumstances. And in this case, we, we launched a super successful product. We started making toilet paper cakes out of fondant and we sold hundreds of them. I think they were $25, $30 each. And it was, it was a playful way to keep things light in, in spite of, you know, a very serious pandemic. But people were looking for a little, little bit of laughter in, in, in considering all the, what was going on. We sold a lot of cookie kits during this time. You know, people were doing things at home still. One of our big things, which was a total surprise to me, is we started selling like liter bottles of sanitizer from a local distillery. And these things were selling, I think they were like $12, $13 a pop. And this was when sanitizer was still really hard to come by. And so that was, that was big for us. These were things that I think really kept us going because they were higher transaction dollar items. We started a donated donut program for healthcare heroes. So customers could come in our store and buy a little paper donut, pay a dollar for it. And later this year, when the time is right, we'll donate all those donuts to healthcare heroes. That was just another way to generate some revenue and kind of feel good. Everyone benefits, the customer busking and, and the healthcare heroes. And then during graduation, we did a graduation cake giveaway where we made little four inch cakes, very simply decorated. And I think during a week time, we gave away a couple thousand of them. So they were free, but the idea was just to get those folks in our stores. Let them know we're still in business. We're still open. We're still operating. It was pretty inexpensive on our side. Just kind of chalked it up to marketing and advertising and, but it brought a lot of new folks in. And typically when we do any sort of giveaway, people that come in always end up buying a beverage or other products or half a dozen donuts, what, what have you. Another part of us kind of pivoting is we really started to decide who we wanted to be our customers. So we, the other side of our business, the wholesale side of our business, we sell to a lot of hospitals, caterers, grocery stores, those types of folks. And typically they don't pay very frequently. Sometimes they're 90, 120 days on their terms. And we just decided unless they want to pay us in a reasonable amount of time, like 30 days, we just weren't going to do business with them anymore. So it gave us a chance to really start to harvest some of those folks that. The hospitals in particular are, were pretty poor at paying on time. So early on, we just stopped delivering to hospitals and partly because of the safety of our employees. We didn't want them in the, in those areas. But it's something we've questioned the profitability of for a long time. So it gave us a chance to really just kind of stop that temporarily. Another thing we did that I think everybody on this call can do, and that is we, we just started going down our list of vendors and suppliers and service contracts that we had. I called our bank and was able to get 30% off our banking fees just, just by asking. We changed our property and casualty insurance broker and we were able to save, you know, probably four digits a year on that. We went to our payroll processor and started to clean up that and save some money there. Just everything from uniform suppliers, our landlords. We have a warehouse where we store all kinds of useless bakery garbage and equipment. We just purged all that and reduced our square footage there. We called Verizon and got discounts off our cell phones. We have a third party IT company. Again, just ask them where they could give us some reduced fees for a while. And they were all, I, I think the, the, the key takeaway here is you don't know till you ask. And we weren't doing any of this prior to, to COVID. We should have been, but that's something good that came out of this is we, we were forced to do some of those things and, and they paid off. Of course, we, you know, started doing curbside and DoorDash. Eventually we reopened two of our eight stores. So at this point we had three stores open. We did that cautiously. And again, the kind of, I guess, the summary of this sort of phase is that surprisingly, we started making a profit, more of a profit than we'd ever made during this time of year. And. We also, I noticed just personally that more of my passion for the business was coming back. Some of you are probably familiar, heard the phrase run and not be weary. This is not to say that we weren't all running. We were running more than we had ever run and we were more tired than we had ever been. But it wasn't a weary tired. It wasn't a tired of being burnt out on the business. It wasn't a tiredness of being frustrated with employees. It was more of comparable to if you've ever done something you're super passionate about, like run a marathon or build something. It, it takes a lot of energy, but when you're done, you feel very satisfied and very fulfilled. And that, that started to happen within our organization, especially with me. I started to kind of sense passion for, for the business again. And it was, it started to be, despite all the stress, I mean, granted there, these, these were and still are very stressful days. But I started to really have more passion for the business. And it was interesting to see that with only one, two, three locations, we were actually more profitable than we were with eight locations. Something we probably could have never tested in, you know, normal conditions. So jumping to the pioneer phase of the PPP. And this is really where probably what's on most of our minds is charting this new course. What do our businesses look like today and what are they going to start to look like? I'd really like to hear from some of you later on the call, some of the things that you're doing, if some of the things you're considering, what your, what your new course looks like. But to summarize this, really, we just kind of pushed a reset button. And I'd ask all of you, what have you always wanted to do, but haven't had the guts to do in your business? Ask yourself that question because right now, if there's ever a time to try something that you've always wanted to do, but were fearful of doing, might have wondered if it would made financial sense, might have wondered if your customers would accept it, might have wondered if, how much backlash there'd be. Do it now. Now is the time. There's still time. Do it now. Try it. Kind of few of the things I'm going to talk about here in a minute are some of those things, things that, you know, we just really didn't have the courage to do. But this whole pandemic not only forced us, but allowed us to, to make some of those decisions. So really my new motto is less is more. We still only have three stores open. But as we all know, less people, less drama, less stores, less invoices, less, just less of everything, right? Less stores, less employees, less paperwork, less, less is more. And it's, it's fortunately proving out financially for us that we can do more bottom line with, with less people and less stores. Another kind of new, new lens that we're looking through in our business is we, we've always been very focused on year over year to just, I guess, kind of measure success, you know, is this store doing better year over year? Are sales better year over year? Are the customer counts up? Are the average sale, is that going up? We did a lot of looking back, which is valuable. It's very valuable. Actually, it's valuable when you're trying to look forward and set targets or keep a pulse on, on different parts of your business. But what we're learning is that we're a totally new business now. We, we can't compare apples to apples anymore. You can't compare three stores to eight stores. You can't compare lots of wholesale accounts to a few wholesale accounts. You know, 120 employees to what now is about 60. So we're really changing our lens and looking forward. We're trying to forecast, which we had done before, but each week we're measuring, you know, our success against really our target for what we're going to try to do over the next four to six weeks. So we're, we're just spending more of our time looking forward, forecasting what the best we can. It's very difficult in the circumstances, the forecast at all. But the forecast, what we think will happen and measure against that versus the year over year. And that seems to be, it just makes more sense right now because like I said, we can't compare apples to apples. So where are we? Well, we had eight stores. We went down to one for, I think, four to six weeks. We eventually opened up two more. So now we have three. So now the question is, what do we do with the five that are still closed? We've actually permanently closed two of those. They were very fragile before, before the pandemic. And they couldn't withstand that type of blow. So we, again, just took that opportunity to permanently close them. But we still have three that are temporarily closed and we're just proceeding with caution. We're not in a hurry. We're more in a, we're more curious to see how long we can continue to generate a profit in this new model before we rush to just open the stores because our customers want us to reopen or we think we need to reopen. This is where the forecasting really comes into play because we can say this is what our new organization looks like. This is our new size. This is our new revenue that the stores are generating. And if we can continue, I've asked our team several times if, if we can do better with less locations and less employee, would there be any reason to go back? And of course, the answer is no. Some other things we've done, we made a decision to close our stores on Sundays. I know many of you are closed on Sundays, but that was a big decision for us because it's one of our largest revenue days of the week. That was more a decision that we wanted to make for a long time, but haven't had the guts to do it. And we finally said, hey, if we're going to do it, now's the time to do it. Our main location has been open 24 hours a day for, since the 1960s. Again, staffing on third shift, just all the things that happened overnight. We, we just made the decision, we're not going to be a 24 hour location anymore. So now we operate from six to 10. Let me tell you, it's great. Dayparts, we, we started to notice throughout this and it still continues, even though the state's opening back up is that we've lost a lot of our morning day part, the folks that were on their way to work or taking their kids to school. That's just, that business isn't really there much anymore. And people are shopping midday and later in the day, which is weird for us as a bakery. We, we weren't used to that, but we've had to shift and staff accordingly and see new faces, but the dayparts have shifted. So that's part of kind of new for us and what will be new moving forward. I've talked about accounts and just how we've harvested some of those and we're very cautious to engage in any of those. Again, this, this whole thing gave us an opportunity to let go of some of those temporarily and see that, hey, as a company, we could, we could still make a profit without some of those larger accounts. Our product mix, this is something that I've heard a lot of you have done, but we've, we've reduced our product mix. We prided ourselves on being a full scale, full line bakery that made everything with the exception of wedding cakes. But we've greatly reduced the, the number of SKUs we offer. And what's it, what it's done is really helped to reduce our number of discards as well. We are just making way too many products, way too many varieties and throwing away way too many of those every day. So that's helped our bottom line as well. And I guess last year is I'm challenging our, our team to continue to think of what I'm calling the, the next sanitizer, the new sanitizer. Because if we can come up with kind of an impulse purchase or an add-on purchase and have that rotate throughout the year, that customers are not necessarily coming in to buy. And this could be anything. This could be a non-bakery food item. But I'm really challenging our team to keep thinking of what the next new sanitizer could be. Cause our average transaction went up about $5 per person. It was around $8 per person and it went up to about $13 per, per customer. When we are selling this sanitizer and the toilet paper cakes and some of these other sort of things that we know won't last forever. But we're trying to be more intentional about having those available so that, you know, the average transaction stays where it is. So I guess in closing here, just. Just take advantage of this time, take advantage of this, this pause. Hopefully there's some good news out there. Hopefully there is some silver lining in your businesses. Take an opportunity to, to chart a new course, do some things that you wanted to do, push, reset. Don't be afraid. It's a great time to do it. It's a great time to do what you've always wanted to do or maybe thought you couldn't do. So Bernadette, I will try to give this back to you here. There you go.
Then I'm going to see. Okay, I'm going to, um, I don't know, Dan, if you can, there we go. Perfect. Thank you. So the other person that we're going to quickly go to is Anthony, if you're, can unmute yourself. And Anthony is from Henry's Bakery. And Anthony, I know you guys have done quite a bit of this as well. And I love hearing Dan's story because I think Dan is so right in saying now is the right time to do all of this. It sort of gives us, it's not a great thing to have happen, but it sort of gives us all a great excuse to figure it out and to be brave about changing products and things like that. So Anthony, if you can unmute yourself and maybe give us a little bit of your story as well, that would be great.
Sure. Sorry, my wife put me on baby duty. I said the baby be sleeping until 4:30 or getting a little bit of stirring, so. Sorry, my wife put me on baby duty, so the baby be asleep until 4:30 or get a little bit of stirring, so. Sorry if I'm distracted for a second. So it's interesting to hear Dan speak because when I look at you know, kind of what we've been through this, there's a lot of similarities and a lot of parallels. I think many of you guys came to Atlanta and as you know, I was in the medical device world for about 10 years. And bought this business not really knowing it about three years ago. And obviously for this to hit at this time is a, was a challenge and you know, so I think when this first, this all happened, I mean, I think I told my wife, I said, I need a, a week to kind of lock myself in a room with a whiteboard and, and just told my staff I wasn't going to be around. And I needed to kind of understand like what the field we were planning on was. And I think that was the challenge for everybody is that nobody knew the rules, right? We're all playing a game and there's no rules, so we're all trying to figure out. You know, how to score, what to do. And so I locked myself in a room and I was looking at different avenues and you know, I think to Dan's point, the the time to change the business is we've been in business 90 years. When I bought the business, there was a lot of things I wanted to do and I looked at it from a strictly business approach and took some of the nostalgia out of it. I knew we needed to do. And, and so when this happened, I think, you know, what I told my team, I said, now's the chance for us to any change we ever want to make, now's the time to do it. Because you kind of get like a pass right from customers. And then come in for so long expecting something and then it's not there. And for us, one of the things I think that we've done forever, but was never profitable for our business was donuts. And I think it, we, we're not in super high density areas. You know, I would see them make donuts and they cut them out by hand, they would fry them, they would glint out, just like it would take so much labor. And, and obviously doing that, we would open early at seven o'clock and and so we shifted initially is we changed our hours to open up at nine, which cut out quite a bit of labor. You know, we got rid of some of the items that we've been wanting to, to make a move on, that we just hadn't done and, and did that. To Dan's point, the cookie kits were, were great for us. But I think this, the single biggest thing is, is I, I mentioned to some of you, I might have the other, if you're on the Southeast call is I'm a partner in a brewery out of Albany and we started making sanitizer. So I saw, I said, what can I sell right now through our business that would bring revenue as quickly as possible? And, and sanitizer for us was a huge ticket, so I had guys delivering trucks from the brewery, which is about three hours to my house, sticking in the stores. And we were pushing sanitizer through our three retail outlets. And then inevitably my sales size would come out and I would get a lead from somebody that you guys have sanitizer. We're selling sanitizer, I think I sold to 200 perch rental cars or one of the rental car companies, I mean, just things were kind of going. And I know we talked a little bit about earlier with the food truck. There's a lot of rules around food trucks about where you can go and what you can do. And so I was kind of timid as far as not wanting to push the envelope, but I want to say by week two or three of this thing, it was kind of like gloves were off, right? It was kind of blah, 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 west and people in our neighborhoods, you were allowed to get liquored to, to walk down the street. And then everything was kind of released, so what we did is we took, we started, I started, challenged our team, started calling on HOA leaders in neighborhoods. And, and started gathering destinations, we had the food truck going in April, it's two or three times a day. And we would do pre-orders with it. We would do chicken pop pies or some kind of frozen meal, then obviously deliver lunch and cookies and things like that. I think going to communities, I did a couple of things, so one, we had just kind of launched the food trucks, we didn't have a name out there with it yet, but it's, it it, it gave us a sense of being in the community. It's really opened the eyes to people that didn't know about the food truck, we're getting a bunch of, of that stuff now. And it was just a way to, to help offset some of the revenue that, you know, maybe we were missing in some of the stores. You know, from people coming in, I think we all navigated and did what we could as far as trying to make it as safe as possible. But that was a, that was a big thing. And then I think the single biggest thing besides the sanitizer that we did, which is similar to Dan, is, is you, you think about the situation and you think about how can you help people and what can you do? And, and we did a program called and we were helping healthcare heroes, support healthcare heroes. And so we started doing $10 sack lunches that customers could purchase. And we would match 50% of all the purchases or all the sack lunches, so if someone bought a hundred dollars in sack lunches, that gets 10 sack lunches, we would be able to deliver 15. And when I went down and broke my cost, I would make a little bit of money on it, but what it did is when it got really a little bit slow for that, those little bit of times, it helped me keep people employed. And keep revenue coming into the business. And we were taking the food truck with our big old sign on, driving into a hospital and delivering, you know, a thousand lunches. And all of a sudden, people started seeing what we were doing. We were getting people, I mean, I had someone from, had a state, bought $1,200 worth of lunches. And I think through that program over a month, we did almost a hundred thousand dollars in product that we that now that I say that, that by $80,000 in sales and with our match, we pushed over a hundred thousand and we were able to deliver lunches to hospitals. So we were getting revenue in. I had worked with some of my vendors to get them to donate some of the product, so it helped offset some of the, the match costs. And then we were also able to get obviously the goodwill from the community. And so when people were buying those, they were also buying other items. And, and now what it's kind of done is I've gotten contacts in a lot of these big hospitals and it was who I used to call on. But now we're getting reorders and, and some, you know, there's not a lot of catering business right now, but we're getting a lot of that coming out of it, so. You know, you can come up, I mean, you can go to our website, you probably can see some of the, 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 the stuff that we had. We start through our Facebook, but it really, it took a, the news was out about it, we had a couple of articles written about it, it was just a good program. It was funny because all of a sudden, everybody at land has started doing something similar pretty quickly. And not that we led the charge, but I definitely think we were one of the largest ones, you know, around here and donated as much as anybody, which was great. You know, to Dan's point, as we, you know, kind of cut out some expenses and shaved our hours and realized some of the things. I would say the, the last three months from a profitability standpoint. If you look at our EBITDA or just look at our, at a straight dollar standpoint, we are in a better spot now than, than we were before. And, and I think I can put it like, and we just signed a lease on a fourth or an LOI and a fourth location and I kept telling my team, I said, you can navigate through this. I said, there's going to be so much opportunity coming on the backside of it. And fortunately, unfortunately, obviously for some, but this, the new spot I'm going to walk into is where a typical build out for me would cost somewhere around $300,000 with equipment and everything. I'm going to walk into a place for about $25,000 or $30,000 and it's fully operational, I'll buy a couple of deli units and you know, I just think if you can get through this and you figure out whatever your, your new norm, your new model is, I think there's going to be so much opportunity to not have to build things from, from the ground up, but to be able to walk in and make a few tweaks out of it. That's my story.
Can I ask real quick, being in Atlanta, you know, I know Atlanta is, is a hot state or hot state, a hot town right now and Georgia's a hot town. How does that affect what you guys are doing as far as like getting the catering and stuff and all of those orders and stuff? Are there different things and precautions that you have to take? Because of all of that, I mean, I know we're all in different areas and we all have different rules and we were talking about masks before, mask on, mask off. But and then Dan, I don't know you too and at Baskin's, is that part of, you know, just when you're changing things up? Just knowing how to communicate the protocols, the new protocols, what's different, that kind of thing?
I can speak to Atlanta. I haven't seen a dramatic change since this all started. I think there was more caution early on in the pandemic about things being sealed. I just got a phone call before I was telling you, we're not doing fountain drinks right now. I know that I've just kind of, I sent a message out to my team, how many, how many times we think we're losing a fountain drink, right? Because we don't, we can't offer and that's $2 a customer, you can think about it. And, but to answer your question specifically. We, all of our catering stuff, we've done, we've kind of gotten away from sandwich trays and a lot of it now, we've gone back to doing like sack lunches. And so sandwiches are packed, cookies are packed and the bags are, we're doing these large group bags. You know, we're, we're doing 500 or six, so we're stapling the bags so no one can go in once they're made. As far as protocols, I think they're pretty standard across, our employees wear a mask. We have pretty early on wiping things down. I personally at this point am not requiring people to wear masks, there's been a lot of controversy with the governor and the, and the mayor. And there's exemptions to that, I just told our team that we are not, I don't want to be responsible for telling someone they can't, you know, have an item because they're not wearing a mask when maybe they have an underlying medical condition. So kind of leaving that up to the community to make those decisions.
And, and Dan, I'm going to come back to you if that's okay, just communication wise, when you make all of those changes of you know, like closing the stores and, and obviously laying off employees, that's so tough and everything and then deciding when to reopen. Tell us a little bit about how you're communicating with your employees and, and your communities really, just about what the plan is. I think they have to unmute, yeah, there you go.
Yeah, it's amazing how much time that takes. It's like managing a business, it's like a second business. Pandemic, just staying up to speed with all the current regulations and what our governor is, you know, he's constantly making changes and updates and new requests, regulations, so just committing time to that. Fortunately, we have somebody that kind of manages the HR side of things. But testing and how that works with keeping the facility open versus closed. We've been very fortunate that the grow of our employees have tested positive, so we haven't had to to cross that bridge yet, but we're ready because we know it's going to happen and we're preparing people. Here in the main facility, we try to have huddles face to face, like once a week with as many people as we can. Tell them kind of what to do if something like that were to happen, who to talk to. We really tried to be open about the status of the business because if you don't tell people, they fill in the blank with the worst possible scenario. So if they don't know that we're actually doing okay or doing better than before, the they all think you're going out of business, so it's really important to, in my mind, to do the communication regularly. Even if it's just through email, if you can't reach everybody face to face, but face to face is always better. It gives people an opportunity to ask questions. And we just try to be pretty transparent about things that are going on. You know, we, whether it's are we wearing masks or not and, or is, is the place still going to be in business in two weeks kind of thing?
So now we have just about 10 minutes left before we sort of have to close up the town hall. So if, if anybody has any questions or would like to tell their story, thank you to Dan and to Anthony too, just for giving us your story and I love the idea of the PPP, like changing the, what that PPP means to us now. So if anybody has a story they'd like to tell about what their bakery is doing or what they have done to pivot or to kind of pioneer what you're doing now, you can certainly unmute yourself. We have about 22 on the call, so maybe give us a wave and then unmute yourself and then we can hear your story. And I can also, I believe I can unmute you, I'm not sure about these Zoom anymore, but but if you have any questions for Dan or, or you can also, go ahead Janice, you can unmute yourself there.
I, I have a question kind of for everyone, I'm just curious about custom cakes. So what we saw was obviously people weren't getting the big elaborate custom cakes. And they just came in and bought what we had in the showcase or maybe they wanted some small eight inch round or quarter sheet and I wanted to know, did, has anyone thought about like not having custom cakes anymore because of that? Because they still bought what was in the showcase, I'm just kind of polling the group here.
Yeah, I want to comment, we hadn't been doing as much in custom cakes, of course, the wedding cake business has gone. And I have to say, I'm in the same situation as Dan, we've cut out things and we're making more money than we were when we had a full cake department and we're doing a lot of wedding cakes and custom cakes. So I'm hesitant to do a lot of marketing to bring that back.
We're in the same boat, Dan, one of the things you said is, you know, what have you, what if, if this is the time to do what you've always wanted to do? And about three years ago, I wanted to cut our wedding cake business in half. Our weekends are so hectic with all the deliveries and I don't know about everywhere else, but in the South, people love to have 400 person weddings. And they're just not all that fun, I mean, is it really worth it at the end of the day? Whether you're making money or not with it, it's, it's, that's where I am, is it really worth it at the end of the day? So we made some changes in our wedding cake business and to cut it at least in half. And it's been wonderful, it's been really wonderful. We've picked up money in other areas, I feel like we're more, not I feel, we are more profitable right now with just getting rid of the low hanging fruit. On the custom cakes, we're still doing them, but we are directing people more to our grab and go where we can just, you're okay. Where we can just do, write a quick message on it or we have little, we make fondant placards and we have pre-written messages on that. So it looks a little bit more fancy, whatever, but I don't think that we could cut out custom cakes completely, I don't think we could afford to. But we have cut way back on, people have cut back on the size of their parties. So it's cut back on what we're doing and we're, we're really, we're hoping to kind of lean people toward that in the future, to have a smaller custom cake and then offer a dessert table to go with it. It's going to kind of be our big push because not everybody likes cake. That's where we are.
Don't say that too loud. Everyone loves cake. If I may, so what we did as well, we, I got rid of all the fondant cakes. The stuff that requires talent and minimal return on my investment, so. We, during the pandemic, during the quarantine, I, I'm in the New York City, Tri-Set area. We standardized all our cakes and we put everything online. So prepaid, pre-orders standardized like Starbucks, A, B, or C, this is what we have. And it, it, it kind of worked out well because I was just selling, I was selling much more of these little six inch, seven inch cakes. And that we, you could bang out 50 of them in no time, than trying to return your investment on talent and, and fondant and all these little things that just waste time. So that was.
Nick, do you think that'll change once the weddings are back up and we're back to our 400 person weddings and that kind of thing? Do you think that'll change or do you think that's something maybe that you'll, and something new?
So, so we're, I'm second generation, we're in business 49 years, right? So we have two locations and I've seen the ebbs and flows of this industry. I've always said that I just don't see a future in fondant at some point. Talent is just not there, so you know, and, and just to do fondant work, like you got some people that are working from home trying to do, but that's not a business, that, that, that's a hobby. Really running a business, you know, I'd rather give the fondant work to somebody that that's their thing and they want to deal with that. Then, then, and let me go back to my little butter creams and, and whipped creams that I, that I excel at and, you know, untouchable at. You know, you, you, you return your investment there and I'm afraid what worries me is the talent, the limited talent pool of doing this is, is getting minimal as, as time goes on. As the old timers are retiring, resumes, I'm getting a lot of resumes from you know, people in their twenties with limited experience and they already have 10 jobs on their resume. And I said, how am I going to hire you? This is not a school, you know, what, what, what's your experience demanding high salaries? So i- if, if you're minimizing, if you're getting, I'd rather get rid of all the wedding, the fondant, custom stuff. And have people that I could train to do buttercream and whipped cream and give it to somebody else. Honestly, and the Sunday, the Sunday is the best, I did that as well. I could enjoy my family again on Sundays. And my business is fine, honestly, it's fine. We're, we're, we're healthy, financially healthy, even if it comes back, I'll give it to somebody else if they want it.
Sorry, I was, I was muted, I said, great answer. It's just hard, I think everybody's sort of figuring out what this new, what, what the new will look like, so. We do have a question after the chat and I would like to get to it before we close out. It said, if you have a person who tests positive, will you close the bakery for two weeks? If anybody would like to answer that, go ahead and unmute yourself. I know in Chicago, the rules have sort of changed, we're no longer under the two week quarantine if somebody tests positive. I believe it's just, you know, three negative tests and, you know, three, maybe three or four consecutive days with no fever. So I know that's changed for us, I don't know though, what that means for your staff if somebody tests positive. So has anybody on the call had a situation where? Has anybody on the call had a situation where you, Luke, I'm gonna, go ahead and unmute yourself if you don't mind and tell us your story. There we go.
Hi, everyone. So quickly, we we had been communicating with the staff about. For and luckily, one of my staff members mentioned that a family member had it at home. So we immediately told her that she was off the schedule until, you know, we were careful what was going on. Well, that ended up turning into basically four weeks off for her and one other employee who happens to live in the same household, unfortunately. So we did not close, but neither one of them were symptomatic while they were at the bakery. Plus. What had happened is we had initiated a mandatory mask rule for all of our employees, probably about the second week of into April. So we knew that everybody was wearing masks at the time. And even if they had been positive while they were on shift, everybody was wearing masks. So. We went ahead and notified everyone. I did have one employee who volunteered to take two weeks off. The other two ended up being off, like I said, for four weeks until I could get negative tests from both of them. And basically, the rest of my staff just stepped up and covered the shifts. Business was very slow at that point, so it wasn't too difficult. A lot of my staff were students as well, so they weren't going to class, so they were welcoming the extra hours. And and also we reduced hours like everyone else, you know, we started opening at six, we opened at seven, we closed at five instead of closing at seven. And 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 it honestly went a lot smoother than I expected. I didn't sleep really well during those days, but. You know, every day coming in and expecting the worst, but we do take temperatures of employees. And we talked really about, you know, monitoring how they feel on a daily basis and not being afraid to call in. And at first, I was afraid of that because in the past, you know, you feel like everybody's going to call in, you know, they're hungover or whatever, but it's it's honestly been an issue. And and everybody's pretty open about how they're feeling and and feeling a little off. I've literally only had one person miss a day of work because they. Were feeling off and then, you know, it turned out to be something else and they were back to work. That's how we handled it and it luckily worked out in our favor. It's definitely a little stressful, but. But I would handle things the same way again. And now if somebody was symptomatic in the bakery. You know, I think things might be a lot different. I do stand behind the fact that we mandatory, we mandate masks by customers and staff now. We ask customers if they're not wearing masks to wait outside till we can help them, or we offer them a mask. The little surgical mask costs a buck. I figure, you know, they're at least going to get a donut. They're probably irregular. They maybe forgot their mask because they were on a run or something. So I figure it's worth the cost of doing business. But that's how we're operating and so far, so good. We're not back to, you know, previous numbers, but. The staff is like healthy and happy and we're all, we're all staying busy and and the customers. We've got great community support, so I can't, really can't complain.
And we had, we did have an issue at one of our stores. So every, these people had jobs elsewhere and they got it at those jobs. And so. What happened was like the one, the first one that got it, he got this other job and he hadn't been to the bakery, he hadn't been to that store in, you know, a week or whatever. So. We didn't, we didn't worry about it and we just kind of monitored everyone. We've been checking temperature since like the beginning of April. We've been wearing masks since about the third week of March. And then someone else worked at a coffee shop and got it from that coffee shop, from that cafe. And that guy came. And we weren't sure what happened and another girl tested positive. And it ended up being from a family member, but at that point, that was three people, so we shut down because. Frankly, the staff there was freaking out and I don't blame them. And so we had everybody go get tested. You know, the other remaining people didn't have it and we were shut down for a week with that. And we are not required in Texas to shut down. I don't know that I would do that again in that manner. I probably would. If anybody feels the least bit sick, we tell them, don't come, don't come in and tell us you're sick. You know how sometimes they come in and tell you they're sick? Don't do that, you know, you're going to get paid, just stay home. And so other than that, we've done pretty, we've been pretty lucky, not going with. But that was how we handled it. So we lost an entire week of revenue. Any, any progress we had made was setback from that. And I'm not sure I would do that again, shut down completely. I might, you know, kind of dissect the people that were near that person and say, go home. And then the other people. Keep working and obviously do a good cleaning. That's probably how I would handle it next time.
Thank you, Janice. That's great. So we're just over, just over three o'clock, but I don't want to cut it short if we're having such a great conversation. So if there's anybody. That would like to share their story or maybe some advice or something that you did that worked or didn't work. I think we all learn from those stories. So I'm going to just give it just a minute. And if you'd like to raise your hand or unmute yourself. That would be great. Otherwise, we'll sort of wrap it up and we definitely will keep doing these town hall meetings. I think. One, it's great to see everybody's faces and it's also great to hear everybody's stories. So. So if you have something else, I don't want to keep talking over everybody. So if you have something, go ahead and unmute yourself and we can chat about your story. If not, we'll say goodbye.
I just. I was going to say. I'm almost back to normal, but we're having a hard time getting employees back. I know this could be a whole nother topic for a whole nother day, but how is everyone else doing on staffing? Are you getting enough people? The people that are coming to apply, I've got fifteen year old kids coming to apply, but I don't have adults coming to apply. Does anybody else running into that?
It's out there. Got it. Yes, same thing. Right now I have sixteen, seventeen, and eighteen year old kids running the place. Out front and that it's a, I can't even get applications.
Do we think that will change at all now that the kicker is going to be gone? Will some of those employees come back? Is that something? We're just sort of waiting. I think that's what July this week, I believe, right? I believe.
It's the end of July. And what I, I would make a suggestion that you call your lawmakers and tell them because. It's a mixed bag. I mean, in the Senate, they're not real inclined to extend it. The House, yes. So I would just say, you can sign all the petitions you want, but call your lawmakers. That's what's really going to make a difference.
Yeah, because it is, I think, in my state, the unemployment bonus is more than most people make. So. A lot, I I feel like some of it's that. I don't know. So we'll see.
In my case, I'm still running into, we've always had a lot of part-time older employees. And I've got at least six of them that don't want to come back because of their age and their health situation. So that's where I'm having a hard time. You know, the kids don't mind working and of course, they can't do anything else right now, so we're taking advantage of that. But. Right now I've got five of them that leave for college in the next three weeks and not a lot of people on the horizon to fill in.
Yeah, me too. Same thing. College town, so they just come and go.
So we had. Well, let me just say, for my part-time positions, I've had trouble getting people in because, you know, they're making more on unemployment. So what I did is I reduced our hours. Instead of closing at seven, we started closing at five and that helped me to eliminate a whole shift. We were closing at eight, I'm sorry. And so we started closing at five. And and then my part-time people that were working what we call our closing shift, then they were able to pick up more hours. They just came in earlier during the day. And that has, that's worked really well. I don't know that we'll change back from that after this is all over. Who knows? But I think it would be a long time. I am advertising right now for an assistant manager trainee. And I have been inundated with applications, but it's people that are looking to make. For the most part, they're looking to make a job switch. It's a higher paying position. And they're looking to make a job switch and we do offer benefits. I'm sure all of you do. But not a lot of bakeries around us do offer benefits. So I know that that's been a big plus. Anyhow, I'm I'm happy with the hours cut back because I don't. I don't get so many interruptions during the evening. So it's been good for me.
Anthony, I know you had a question for Nick.
Yeah, I just, just a quick question. It really could be for the whole group, but. The the finding thing is something I've struggled with and just how much time it takes. When you guys are cutting out fondant, are y'all cutting out all custom work or would you guys still, if you did custom cookies or. You did pedophores, would you, instead of just doing a flower or a booty, would you still offer the taking the time to write initials or? You would do any kind of buttercream or you're just specifically cutting out all fondant?
Question was for him.
I know Nick is driving, so it might be a little tough, but anybody else that would like to answer Anthony's question about maybe cutting that stuff out and. Go ahead, Lawrence, you're down in the unmute yourself there.
Yeah, we we made the decision to to not do fondant years ago. And so we do, anytime we do custom stuff for pedophores and stuff like that, I mean, we we do what we can out of buttercream. We will occasionally do some stuff with some white chocolate where we might, you know, make trace over a picture or something like that, make something out of that. We. We also have an edible image printer, so that helps with some of that stuff, but. We we went the route of dropping all of the, I won't say all the custom cakes, but we don't go after the big weddings. So one of the things we did is if you want to get a cake from us, like a tiered cake for a wedding, we don't do delivery. You got to pick it up yourself. And so that limits the size and it limits what we've got to do with that. Now, there is some risk. That somebody might mess that cake up and you got to deal with all that, but that has not really been something that has happened a whole lot. And it takes away the stress of the deliveries, but like the biggest cake size we do. Might be like a fourteen, twelve, eight or something like that. That's probably going to be the largest cake size we do. Most of what we do is a nine, six or a twelve, nine, six. And that's about it. And and that that hasn't been a big issue for us. I mean, we do a lot in the way of birthday cakes. We do a lot in the way of layer cakes. And it takes away the stress of all that custom stuff that can, that can be such a headache for no return, you know?
Can I say something? This is Kirk over at Torrance Bakery calling or here. The one thing that I don't know if this is already brought up before is the fact that. You don't want to spend a lot of time with the customer. So that's why you don't want to take a cake order. It's like, you know, we're telling our people, under ten minutes to take a cake order. In most cases, it's got to be under five minutes. So. If you start doing complicated stuff, you're you're putting both the customer and your staff at risk for catching something. I mean. I've spent a ton of stuff, a ton of money in Plexiglas, but still, it's, it's, I think you want, you want to, you want to keep that train moving, you know, you want to keep it going. So. You only want your customer in there for as least amount of time as possible. And I think your staff is happier that way.
Thank you, Kirk. That's a great point. So we're just at three fifteen. We always have such a great conversation when we have these meetings. So I really appreciate everybody jumping in and. And telling their bits of stories and giving advice and and what you all are doing. And on behalf of the Retail Bakers of America, we really appreciate you being on this call. And Dan, thank you. For being our guest speaker today and telling your, you know, what you all are doing. And it's really good to. To hear that sometimes the changes that we're making are for the better and we're shaking out the dead weight and we're getting all of that stuff moving. So. Sometimes it's really great to hear those good stories as well. So again, on behalf of the RBA, we appreciate it. Stay tuned. We'll definitely be having more of these. So and if you'd like a topic to be one of our town hall meetings, for sure, just maybe send me an email and we can see about getting a studio, getting that, getting that moving. So. Thank you, everybody, very much. It's great to see all your faces, as I said. So have a great rest of your day. Thank you. Bye bye.